Good morning. Call this call for voting together with Tony Stupor Sykes. Dan, you're in here. Point of interest is... ...the United States where the history of which stands one nation under God and if this all will ever be enjoyed as a sorrow. Good morning, everyone. Roll call please do.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Merrihue?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Depot?
Here.
Mr. Farby?
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Skozbala?
Here.
Mr. Cannon has been excused. Mr. Pootie?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Whitson?
Here.
Mr. Grinnell?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mr. Goyland?
Here.
And Mr. Preston?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no guests, however, our assemblyman, Mr. Steck is here. Dan, would you like to say, I guess first we have to motion to, uh, proceed forward to Dan by twelve?
Yes, we do. Yep.
Come on, Dan. Good morning, everyone. It's always a privilege to be here. Just wanted to come up, keep in touch, no big messages. We're not in session right now, so there's nothing going on in Albany, and I guess depending on your perspective, you know, that could always be a plus or a minus. But I know that you got a lot of business in front of you today. Just wanted to come up here, listen, and then stick around afterwards. I'm gonna have the office hours up in my office above the courtroom here this afternoon. Kind of played out. I want to thank County Clerk Joe Provantia for putting that on the county website, so that's up there. And we're gonna try to make this, you know, a semi-routine thing. We'll try to pair them with board meetings. It's the best way to get a hold of all of you at one time, or vice versa. So kind of make a day of it in E-Town for me. So at least my plan today. I know that a couple of issues of mutual concern, I checked in with your chairman. I don't know if you're gonna be discussing it or not today, because I know that Supervisor Cannon is not here. But certainly, it's been in and out of the papers, the oil trains, and actually, I ran into Pete Demorey yesterday at the Jay Parade, visit with him a little bit, he mentioned it, and it's been kicked around, discussed down Warren County a little bit. I'm not sure legally if there's a role for any of the individual municipalities, specifically Warren County, or any of the towns involved, to have a veto or approval. You know, I think it was pitched, and Dan asked me, Dan Palmer asked me, you know, can Warren County kill this? It was presented to Warren County, my understanding, as a courtesy. Hey, we're a partner with you, we, the railroad, is a partner with Warren County, we want to let you know what we're doing. But by the same token, they also said, but we kind of like your blessings. So not really clear if there's a role for local government to play or not, other than certainly, you know, you're where the rubber meets the road, and if you have an opinion, you should let it know. My suspicion is that the authority over something like this is gonna land with DEC and APA. And just, you know, off the cuff, you know, no one's asked me yet, but other than Pete gave me the courtesy yesterday to say, well, they might talk about... All the concerns that I've read in the newspaper from the Warren County Board Supervisors, and I had a conversation with George Cannon about it myself, and briefly just now with Bill, and, you know, I think everyone is saying, we don't have, we, local government, doesn't have enough information to say whether or not we like this or don't like it. I think many of us, including myself, our initial reaction is, I'm not comfortable with it. You know, I mean, I'm in, so right now, I'd be in the no camp, and I need convincing to feel otherwise. But it's, you know, it may be premature for us to say flat out, bad idea. I mean, my concerns really on the oil tanks, tanker cars, would be, what assurances would be, we have that these wouldn't be abandoned, left there forever? You know, and I think that, and security. And obviously, the eyesore, the visual impact. You know, we would like to see the railroad healthy and successful, and I know Warren County feels that way, and they certainly have a little more, you know, dog in the fight than you do, because they have a partnership with the railroad. So I know that they'd like to see them successful. I think their idea perhaps was, we'd like to haul tailings out to haws, and want to clean up the haws, but by the same token, you know, move some material and generate some revenue for the railroad and for the county and the town of Corinth. That really hasn't happened yet. It's a little early, maybe too early, to say that that won't happen, but it looks like in the meantime, they're looking for temporary revenue sources, and this oil tanker storage thing is what they've come up with. But again, I think the uncertainties of how many, exactly where, what the security plan's gonna be, and most importantly, what guarantees are we gonna have that you're not gonna move from here, and three months will turn into thirty years, and make it even uglier. So, you know, and that, now, I also, shifting gears off of that issue, I know another resolution in front of you guys, and I did not come up here for this, but I know that the County Sheriff's Association went around the state and talked to all their sheriffs and kind of put out to them, hey, we would like our county boards to weigh in on a bill that passed this session that is on its way to the governor now regarding the shackling of female prisoners. I believe it passed unanimously in the senate, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I know it passed one hundred and forty-three to three in the assembly. Not saying that it would have changed my vote, I voted in favor, but I think it is interesting to point out that the Sheriff's Association did not communicate an opposition to the bill before we voted on it. So, and those kinds of things are important. We actually read the mail, who's for, who's against, and why, and a bill like this to sail through one forty-three to three, there was no opposition on record at the time. So the concerns came up after the fact. I don't hold against anybody that says, hey, you know, we don't, you know, this is a problem, looking for a solution. I know that's their opinion, but again, I'm not sure that Sheriff's Association opposition would have significantly changed the vote count in the assembly. I come from local government, you know, so I'm sensitive to unfunded mandates. I guess for me, the question would have been, how big an issue, you know, how many female prisoners does Warren County, Essex County, Surratt County, Washington County have to deal with? You know, how big of an impact is this unfunded mandate, so to speak? And I can see professionally where law enforcement's coming from, hey, we know our jobs, we don't need bureaucrats or legislators in Albany telling us our job. But there's a history to this bill, why it came in, is because there are abuses elsewhere. I'm gonna wager, help you bet, it was far south of here, you know, with how they were handling these kinds of prisoners, and I think it was a recurring theme, and that got the attention, and some fire behind it from New York City, and they brought it to Albany. But I'm not here to talk you guys into it or out of it, so don't, you know, your discussion today, if you want to pretend I'm not there, you're not, no one's gonna say anything in this room on this subject that's gonna offend me, I get it, but I thought I would, since I know you're gonna talk about it today, I thought I would at least acknowledge the issue, and, you know, I mean, like you, I always want to be on the side of our sheriffs, they do a great job, and certainly, my yes vote is no indication at all, my opinion, of the operations of any of our local jails or law enforcement. I certainly trust Sheriff Cutting and his judgment and his staff here to do the right thing, but again, looking at a statewide picture on this issue, that's where we came down on that. So, well, I'm here, if there's anyone that's got a question they want to ask me publicly, I'll take them elsewise, I'll be around the rest of the day, and Sharon, I could see you, and, you know, you can catch me one-on-one later. Thanks, Dan. Just a, you know, on the oil tank storage, we're really, I was really waiting to have this conversation with Supervisor Cannon, because I know George has some connections with IP Rail. We've attended a meeting a month ago in Lake Placid, and truly to get George's feel on this, and the supervisors that I have talked to, you know, pretty much their answer is the same as Dan, you know, we want to know more about length of time, storage, how they're gonna go out to protect any oil leakage that may come out for the environmental, so we're kind of waiting to get a discussion on that.
I mean, what's the ultimate fate of these cars? I mean, are they putting them there to bring them someplace and dismantle them in the future? Is that the...
Well, that is the, that is the big question, because, you know, there's a scrap metal value to them.
Right.
But I think there's also a certain amount of, let's wait and see, and maybe something changes, and maybe we can reuse these cars, in a, you know, with a retrofit, or in a different, you know, carrying a different material. So there may be value to reuse these cars when the dust settles and everyone figures out, you know, the future of how we're hauling, you know, petroleum products.
The reason I ask is that many years ago, in the late seventies, the rail industry was changing the specifications for their boxcars, and they stored a bunch of them in Port Henry down on a siding, but they also, someone had the insight and started a business, and used the old LC&amp;M locomotive shop, and they actually took these cars, rebuilt them, and for the rail company, for the owners of the cars, and they were in business for quite a while, so, you know, I'm just, maybe there's a business opportunity here also for someone to look into that.
You know, if nothing else, there's a conversation now, they didn't just show up and start doing this, it is getting vetted now. Whether they wanted it to get vetted like this or not, it is, and they're gonna be asked some hard questions. I know DEC and APA are looking at this, they're getting, you know, they're reading the papers too, and they're getting the same calls and letters, and so, I don't think there's anyone in government that's in a rush to just greenlight this without making sure that they've got all the answers to all these questions.
Thank you.
Looking at Tom, though, Supervisor Spazababa, I just wanted, and Mike Mascherini's still in the audience, I wanted to thank Mike and acknowledge a project that Tom and I and Mike have been working on, with Chairman Farby's help, and certainly, the administration's help prior to that, Randy Douglas, regarding the fate of Petro Dam, and I know that in a recent board meeting, you guys had discussion and a vote on, you know, moving forward with the grant funding that the county applied for to remove this dam. I mean, the history of the dam, I don't, you know, Tom knows it better than all of us, but, you know, Irene, there was a lot of damage done downstream to public infrastructure because of this privately owned dam that the owners of the property would just soon not have, but it came with the property. And so, Mike's been very diligent, bird dogging this, and it looks like, I just asked him, and he says it looks like the window to get this work done is gonna go a little farther in the fall, so we might be able to do this prior to winter, which would be absolutely wonderful. But I wanted to thank Mike and Tom, and Chairman and the administration for all their effort on that.
I want to thank you for your effort, because the fact of the matter is, is that this would have never happened without Dan Steck. I mean, he is the one that put a team together, had conference calls in regards to the dangers. This is the dam that took out Broad Street, by the way, that cost the county, you know, their FEMA millions of dollars at that time, destroyed all of our infrastructure, took out Port Henry Beach, and even though it is privately owned, the twist in this is that one time, it was owned by the town of Mariah, that property and that dam, back in the early seventies. So, you know, there's a history there, certainly, it's a Class A hazard, that dam, and it's something that needs to go for the public's safety and benefit. It's not like we're going in there and spending money on private property to enhance that individual's property. This is for a public purpose only, and the individual that owns it has spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to get to this point in regards to permitting process, engineering, so on and so forth, so it's just, it's a difficult dam to remove. That was a big part of the problem also.
But it serves no purpose, and, you know, I think for the public's safety, y'all are doing the right thing.
Governor Cuomo has actually seen that dam.
He's been there, right?
He's been there.
That's a photo, he doesn't want to have to, you know, see it again, if there's an incident, I'm sure.
So thank you, Dan.
Oh, thank you. Anything, any other questions for Dan? I'll be around. Thanks. Thanks. Bye, Seth. Thank you, and we'll move on to resolutions. Shoot.
Resolution two eighteen, authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for and accept a grant from the New York State Chapter March of Dimes, fifteen hundred dollars, community award for prenatal education and social support services in Essex County, and further authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Blades, second. Mr. Moore, comments or questions? Being none, all in favor, or... Excuse me, I'm sorry, roll bubble.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two nineteen, authorizing the Public Health Department to accept a five-year Creating Healthy Schools and Communities grant with Clinton County in the amount of one hundred thousand per year, a coordinated multi-sector effort to increase demand for and access to healthy food and opportunities for physical activity, and further authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Merrihue. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-one, authorizing the write-off of bad debts in the Public Health Department for the Certified Home Health Agency from July two thousand eight through July, June two thousand thirteen, in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand eight-hundred eighty dollars and eighteen cents.
Move by Mr. Blades, second. Second. Mr. Harrington, comments or questions? Being none, roll bubble.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-one, authorizing the write-off of bad debts in the Public Health Department for the Certified Home Health Agency from July two thousand eight through July, June two thousand thirteen, in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand eight-hundred eighty dollars and eighteen cents.
Move by Mr. Blades, second. Second. Mr. Harrington, comments or questions? Being none, roll bubble.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-three, of condolence to the family of Laura K. Sobel.
Move by Mr. Marnell. Second. Thank you.
Resolution two twenty-four, authorizing budget amendments for various departments.
Move by Mrs. Skozbala, second. Mr. Whitson, comments or questions? None, roll bubble.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-five, of non-support of the New York State Assembly Bill, A sixty-four thirty Shackling Bill as Unfunded Mandate.
Move by Mr. Blades. Second. 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 Thank you.
Resolution two twenty-six, authorizing the Department of Public Works to pay Town North Elbow forty-five thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents, with fifty percent reimbursement grant for the household hazardous waste aid from budgeted funds.
Move by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, roll bubble.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-eight, authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to Stephen Fuller, Excavating Incorporated, for concrete repairs in the total amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred, with forty thousand from budgeted funds, and fourteen thousand nine hundred to come from contingency account.
Move by Mr. Gardner, second. Mr. Merrihue, comments or questions? None, roll bubble.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-seven, authorizing a reserve equipment account for the Department of Public Works to be used for the purchase of equipment to come from monies received from insurance claims, scrap metal, and auction sales.
Move by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Marnell and Mr. Whitson. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two twenty-five, of non-support of the New York State Assembly Bill, A sixty-four thirty Shackling Bill as Unfunded Mandate.
Move by Mr. Blades. Second. Second.
The substituted resolution is the resolution that you have before you, which is entitled Resolution Introducing Proposed Local Law Number Four of two thousand fifteen, Amending Local Law Number Two of two thousand fourteen entitled Essex County Room Occupancy Tax Law, to clarify the definition of hotel or motel. So what we're doing is, we're amending our current local law, and the only amendment we're doing is on page two of the resolution, section two C, where there's a definition of hotel or motel. We're clarifying that, and the reason we're clarifying that is, we don't want there to be any misunderstanding or misperception as to what we tax. And then the new definition for hotel or motel will read, "Any facility providing lodging on an overnight basis," and shall include those facilities designated and commonly known as bed and breakfasts, inns, cabins, condominiums, cottages, campgrounds, lodges, tourist homes, convention centers, vacation rentals, motorcarts, boarding houses, lake cottages, personal residences, or other similar type of accommodation by whatever name designated. Then it goes on to qualify the definition of campground. It states, "The provisions of this section relating to campground shall only apply to those leases and rentals in which the campground provides the overnight shelter or lodging, and shall not apply to the provision of services by a campground when the customer provides his or her own shelter or lodging such as a motorhome, camper, or tent." So what that's designed to do is, if a campground has physical structures that are rented out, a tax will be collected. If they're simply renting out a lot where you bring your own camper or tent, there would be no tax. Additionally, the term vacation rental or condominium shall mean and include those units rented or leased directly by the owner, or through an owner's agent, or real estate agent, or rental management agency, or other similar agent. So, again, this is just designated, designed, excuse me, to clarify the term hotel or motel. Additionally, paragraph E, just a couple, the definition of occupant, I also put slash guest, because we use that word in the local law, so I want that to be, so there's no question what an occupant, guest is. As we stated before, people who live or rent these types of accommodations for thirty days or more are considered residents, so it will not apply to those types of people. So if they rent for thirty continuous day, time period thirty is continuous, thirty continuous days, this would not apply to them. And to refresh your memory, enabling legislation does state, basically, that a hotel or motel includes any facility providing lodging on an overnight basis. And the intent is, if you're providing lodging for pay on an overnight basis, then that's hotel motel. It does go on to say, "It includes other facilities commonly known as bed and breakfast and tourist facilities." And those, that's not an all-inclusive definition, it just says includes. And then the definition of tourist facilities, there is none. So extrapolating that out, tourist facilities, that's my opinion, that tourist facilities do include the laundry list that we put in the amended local law. As I've also stated, the enabling legislation for other counties, there's, runs the gamut, but there are other counties that have the exact same enabling legislation as we do. However, their local law contains a more expansive definition of tourist facilities as we're doing right now. One county that comes to mind is Yates County. They have the Finger Lakes within the county, and their enabling legislation is just like ours, and they've made provision in their local law for vacation rentals, campgrounds, condominiums, and the like. So that's, that's what I'd like to have substituted, so I'd like a motion, the current resolution be withdrawn, and that this, then we pass a resolution with respect to this.
Do we still have, we still have questions on this one, though?
Yes.
Do you have questions?
Well, I read this, Dan, and, I never got, I was never of the impression that the intention was, because I don't see it defined well enough, that an individual who rented their home for less than a certain period of time was subject to the tax. That's what we discussed. I mean, I don't, I don't really care, but that's what we discussed here, that, and I know that in this state, you have a right to rent your residence, personal residence, for fourteen days or less, and not have to pay any tax on that. And it was my impression-
Sales tax, or income tax?
Income tax.
Okay.
It was not my impression, or it was, yeah, it was not my impression that you were going to tax individuals over thirty days. If they were renting out these properties for more than thirty days, they were subject to the tax, but if they were renting them less than a certain period of time, you weren't. At least, I remember that in, in the discussions that we had with the Occupancy Tax Committee, I believe, but maybe that has changed, and if it has changed, it needs to be defined better, because thirty consecutive days, you know, nobody rents for, I mean, I could, I could rent for a week here, and skip a day, and then rent for another week, and skip a day, and so forth. So I don't think that that's properly defined.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this a lot, I sent out a letter in, I don't know, in March, where I had, had this definition qualified a bit, where I had any facility providing lodging on an overnight basis for more than twenty-one days per calendar year. We spoke about that, and it was spoken about at Ways and Means, and it was taken out.
Oh.
So I didn't put it in.
Okay. And who took it out?
I think-
The committee?
When they, when they discussed it at Ways and Means, I believe they, it wasn't-
Well, I think this board has to decide whether that's good, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a- If you're gonna, if you're gonna tax everybody for one day, if they rent their place for one day a year, that needs to be defined. But I think that what it does, it does affect a lot of people in some of the small communities that might rent their, might rent their house for a week, you know.
And that certainly can be done, I can simply add to this definition-
Yeah.
"Any facility providing lodging on an overnight basis for more than twenty-one days per calendar year," or whatever you want for-
Well, was, Mr. Preston, were you chairman of that, are you chairman of that committee?
No, but it was unanimous that we leave it at thirty days.
Wait, wait, we're goofing a couple things up. Thirty days is the, there's a thirty-day qualification, for continuous thirty days, they call you a personal resident, so there is no tax. This, this other time period that we're placing on the law has to do with concerns relative to moms and pops renting out their, their houses. So those are two separate issues.
So if I rent my house for less than fourteen days?
That's income tax.
I know, I realize it's income tax you don't have to pay, but you have to pay occupancy tax, is that what you're saying?
Yes. If you wanna, as I said, my initial suggestion, what I initially threw out was a twenty-one day per calendar year period, which could be expanded, if you wanna make that sixty days, you can, you may wanna make no days-
I'm just referencing the fact that I don't think it's clear, um-
What, what it says now?
It wasn't clear to me, but now it is.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, and I certainly have, whatever the board wants to do, I'm just providing it with-
Okay.
If you wanna qualify it by days, you can.
Yep. Just to follow up on Mr. Poydy, the, that was my understanding also, but what I'm hearing from my constituency is, in regards to this, are the people that have camps on Lincoln Pond, or Lake Champlain, that they've had for generations, and taxes are exceedingly high right now, especially on Lincoln Pond, so they rent these camps for maybe a week, two weeks, very seldom is it longer than that, and then their families use the camps for the rest of the season. They, they do these rentals to help pay the property tax. So I mean, are they going to be subject to the occupancy tax if you rent a camp out for a week?
The way it's, the way it's currently written, yes. If you put in a qualifying time period of twenty-one consecutive days in a year, or twenty-one days per calendar year, not consecutive, or thirty, if you wanna make thirty, then they wouldn't be.
Okay.
But right now, the way whichever-
The way it's in front of us, yeah.
And we, you can event that if you want, today, I mean.
Jerry?
This is introducing, we still have to have a public hearing, don't you, to amend the local law?
Yeah, 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 there will be a public hearing.
So this is just introducing, still gonna have public hearings.
Right.
Steve? Yeah, the enforcement on this is gonna be, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a voluntary basis for these people. I think we should look at this really close, because, I mean, for the person who rents their cabin, to pay the tax is one week a year, how are we ever gonna enforce that anyways?
You know, if you have these two options, one, don't define any exemption, two, put a time period in for moms and pops. I think you will be able to start being able to enforce these, there's ways to do it. The other counties I've spoken to that do have this type of situation are enforcing it, they are getting revenue. I mean, if somebody does it one day, or four days, yeah, you're gonna have a problem. But if they do it on a regular basis, and you don't amend the law, then they're gonna be subject to the tax.
Just one other thing, we've been working on this, with the DEC, on this hut-to-hut, in the smaller towns, we have no accommodations as it is now, for people to come and spend more than one day in our, in our smaller towns, besides Lake Placid, like, there are very few hotels and lodges. This could be a deterrent for people to not rent their cabins by the week, which will affect the local businesses, that these people go out to dinner, they buy gas, they buy fish and loas, so, I don't know, there's a lot to think about.
Sean?
Yeah. Just a question, 'cause I was on the committee like this, on the anticipated increased revenues, what was the plan we were gonna do for that? Is it just all going to Roost? Just kidding, I-
That's what the law, that's what the, is that-
It's my understanding that-
Well, it's not in this.
It will go to Roost, but Roost has agreed to send back funds to the town, I believe the amount, the start was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, they were gonna establish a tourist enhancement fund.
Right.
No, go ahead, you go.
That doesn't say that in there, it says that you-
It's not in there, no.
No, yeah, it says that we'll get the revenue generated, possibly get the revenue generated from each community, which in a town like ours is gonna be very small.
Right, just for clarification purposes, the tourist enhancement funds and the twenty-five hundred dollars stipend that every town is gonna get, and the fifty thousand dollar stipend that is intended that you want to go to the fish hatchery, is not embodied in this resolution, because this is the resolution that introduces the local law, and to have a resolution regarding a tourist enhancement fund prior to the amendment of the local law would be putting the cart before the horse. So my intention would be, once you get this local law the way you want it, and it's passed immediately, the second resolution that will be passed will be a resolution that says a tourist enhancement fund will be created, twenty-five hundred dollars per town, five thou, fifty thousand for, for fish hatchery, and then the anticipated revenues go up, it'll be adjusted accordingly, and there'd be an agreement between Roost and us, and that would all be locked in at the same time. Rather than put the cart before the horse, where we don't, you know, get out of the local law first.
Mr. Maryhill?
Just as buckkeeping has seconded to the original resolution, I would agree to withdraw that, so that we can put this on the table.
Right. Should move, Mr. Maryhill is moving to withdraw and substitute, can we do that at the same time?
Well, just withdraw this one.
Just withdraw this one first, I have a, Mr. Maryhill, I have a second. Second, withdraw. Mr. Moore, any further comments or questions?
For Dan, if, if we, if we adopt this, I understand this is just introducing the local law-
Right.
We adopt this today, this is what goes to public hearing.
Yes.
Then if we decide to make any changes in the language or definitions-
You're gonna have to have another public hearing.
Then you have to have, exactly, so, I mean, I would, I would suggest that, because this is the first that's been on our desks, that we not go to a public hearing with this until we've all had a chance to, to take a look at it, and, and, you know, and maybe the committee, maybe Randy's committee should meet one more time before we, I'm just saying, you could end up with two public hearings here. I mean, obviously, there's some concerns about some of the language that are in, that's in here today, unless we amend it today, hash it out today, and get our amendments in there.
I think we, if we set the public hearing within a couple of weeks, we'll all have had time to review this, at least get the, the public hearing date set, you know, if we-
But the point is, if we set a date for a public hearing, this is subject to review by the public, this is what you've gotta hold the hearing on, am I correct? You can't make changes prior to the hearing.
No, that's what, that's what we disseminated.
With you.
Mike? If it be in order, I suggested we limit it to twenty-one days, legally, they can rent a house for two weeks, twenty-one days, give them another week in between, maybe you got a short week, or two, three, four days, but it's good, like, we need these homes that are rented on the, especially the ones on the lakefront, Jerry, the mountain homes, it's a beautiful homes, that people do rent out for a couple weeks, just to help offset their living expenses, and it's very important that we have them, because we don't have high-end motel units.
I think these are things that could be hashed out, before we have the public hearing.
So now we need to get, we have to draw, no move to withdraw, and we had a second, Mr. Moore, any further comments or questions on that? Mr. Preston?
Well, I just wanna add that the committee was unanimous in the decision we went with the thirty days, and the reason why, if we put a day in there, and we say, well, well, anyone that does it less than twenty-one days, we're not gonna do it, that's what everyone's gonna tell us. And as far as it being a deterrent, it's been proven for years that an occupancy tax is no deterrent whatsoever on renting anything. There's plenty of counties in this state that's already taxing vacation rentals, and the communication we've had with them is, it works, and it works fine. Are there gonna be instances where there's, there's somebody that rents their place out for a couple days or something, are we gonna be chasing them? I don't see where that's a realistic thing, that we would be chasing them. As far as the, the local law, I guess I don't understand what's wrong with it in its current form, because as far as the distribution, that, in my understanding, Mr. Manning, that's done by contract with Roost, and Roost had agreed to these other terms, and as this passed, then there was supposed to be, in my recollection, another occupancy tax meeting to set down and come up with a wording to amend the contract for what we discussed, is how it was distributed.
Yeah, we can do that, just to answer your question about amending this local law, you need to amend it for clarity's sake, so that everybody knows, we hadn't been collecting the tax before, so it needs to be amended for clarity's sake, and sometimes you could get arguments from lawyers on certain verbiage, so it would be better that it be clarified, and it doesn't change anything, it just clarifies exactly what we're gonna be taxing. And I highly recommend that.
Okay, so we have a mover, and we have a second, so the resolution as it was brought forward is withdrawn. Now we need to move-
Was there a vote on it?
There did, I think there was a need to-
If the motion or the second agrees in the con-
Those are the same two people that made a motion?
Yeah.
All right, yeah. We need a vote, just do a vote.
Vote, I'll vote.
On the withdrawal?
Go on the withdrawal.
No, just a regular vote.
Just a regular vote.
Like all in favor?
All in favor, I.
No, I-
Opposed? Now we're done, then. Now we have to have a mover to substitute, Mr. Manning, Mr. Maryhill?
What? Well, okay, go ahead.
I would offer the motion to put this on the table, to adopt the local law as proposed by the Tony Manning.
Okay, we have a mover, do we have a second? A second? Second hearing. Comments or questions? We have a mover.
I don't know what we're voting on right now. Did we amend it for the twenty-one or the thirty days, or did we not?
We have all amendments to the-
No amendments, yes.
That's something we're gonna hash out, as we move forward, before we set the public hearing. Questions? Mr. Brown? The question on the floor, the original question on the floor, is to set a date for consideration of amending the local law as written here.
Right, yeah. It was entered by the packet that was handed out by Dina, prepared by the county-
It's introducing a new local law, which amends the old local law. Simply by-
Is it fact subject to a public hearing?
Yes, it is, yes, yes. We need to establish a public hearing date before we vote on it.
Okay, I have one more question. As I sat here and listened to the discussion, I believe that the Occupancy Tax Committee had recommended this twenty-one or thirty days, and that's not in here, correct?
No, thirty days.
Uh, my recollection, and I could be wrong, is that the occupancy, that's where I got my marching orders, that's why I did this, I'll do this any way you want, but that the Occupancy Tax Committee did not want to put in any qualifying days with respect to rentals by mom and pops. The thirty days, we're getting confused, the thirty days, if someone rents for a continuous period of thirty days, they're exempt from this.
Right.
They're, they're considered permanent resident. That's already in our local law, and it's in every other local law throughout the, all the other counties. So I draft this new amendment based on what the committee came up with.
But if it's less than thirty days-
Then it's subject to the-
Then they're subject to the tax.
Less than thirty consecutive days.
So if, if I own a camp on Lincoln Pond, and I rent it for a week-
Right.
Am I subject to the tax?
Yes, the way it's written, yes.
And that went back to, go on?
No, I was just gonna say, as chairman of that, as Randy has mentioned, we were all unanimous on this, and it's important, when we're talking about days, it was the thirty-day and beyond that was what our real consideration was, that someone who rented a home for two months straight, they would be exempt, or thirty-two days. Anything less than that, then would be subject to the occupancy tax.
Is that the case?
It just makes it simpler, it's easier to enforce, and it's on the books, that's what was important.
That's fine, so, we can change this now, we can amend this law, you want it, so anybody who rents less than thirty days per calendar year is not subject-
Is that, is that, yeah, that's what we do.
That's the way it's written. Okay, we're good.
I mean, just so everybody understands, if this passes today, this is what you go to the public hearing with.
Yes.
There's no time to change it between now and the hearing.
No.
And if you decide after the hearing you wanna make changes, then you're subject to another public hearing.
Right.
Just so that's clear in everybody's head here, if, if you go with this today, this is what you go with.
Right.
So we need to set public hearing dates.
One more question.
Is it in you? No, I didn't-
Mr. Marnell?
If, if it's legal to rent your home for two weeks and not pay any income tax, is that correct? You can rent a home and not pay income tax. Wouldn't that be easier if we, if we stayed within that same timeframe?
On calendar year basis, maybe, but-
No, 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 I mean, that's calendar year, definitely, but it's up to you guys.
Any other question? Public hearing, save it to your-
No, we're gonna-
It's not, we haven't-
What's the next board meeting? Yeah, let's do it. See, actually, could do it.
I just wanna follow up on Mr. Marnell's suggestion, I mean, I, I support this, I realize you gotta level the playing field, but I have had some comments from some property owners within the county that have camps, as I said, they've had them for, for generations that are concerned about this, because that's how they help pay the property tax on these camps. So if we, if this board decided to amend this to go to the fourteen days calendar year, and anything over that fourteen, I mean, in other words, you're following the same criteria as the IRS in regards to reporting that income, that would have to be changed today, correct?
Yes, unless we have another public hearing, I'll do that.
No. Just a question, if, if we grant certain parties or individuals a fourteen-day exemption, does that open the door for any other business that rents rooms to request the same exemption?
You'd have to limit it to whatever, the vacation rentals, you wouldn't wanna do it across the board, because it-
Would, well, if it's a vacation rental, you've put a description in here what a vacation rental is.
Right.
So everything that falls under that description would qualify, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it would be all right anyway, because hotels and motels rent for more than twenty-one days across the board, and, and people that are in the business of doing it, so it'd be fine to do it across the board.
My question is not how many days they rent, but if you offer a fourteen-day exemption-
Right.
Wouldn't anybody be entitled to get that forty, or fourteen-day exemption?
Yes.
Per calendar year, per- We could lose-
You're not gonna lose anything.
We could lose two weeks occupancy tax on every motel, hotel-
No, no, no.
Why not?
No, absolutely not. It's an exemption if, if whatever you rent, if you, if you rent less than fourteen calendar days, you're exempt. Fourteen calendar days per year, you're exempt, so if the Crown Plaza wants to only rent for thirteen days, they're exempt, but that isn't ever gonna happen.
So the minute they rent fifteen days, they're, they're subject to the-
And that's, and this is pretty standard language, you got it out of a lot of the laws that are already on there.
That's, that's the question, I mean, if, if, if they aren't allowed the same exemption, that's fine.
Everybody's gonna have the same exemption.
That's a residential.
Exactly.
That's, I know that, but it, it still, it covers everybody.
It doesn't cover hotels.
No, I, I know it doesn't, it does, it could, conceptually, but it won't.
Saratoga County has a slum place, and when you go down there, they rent all kinds of houses and rooms during the meet, these people aren't paying that three percent, because they probably have that qualification, I'm just saying, they're not paying it, you know, I could look it up.
I got it here somewhere, but, I'm just trying to-
Just again, you know, and this is just my opinion, but the original impetus of this was to level the playing field for those motel and hotel owners who are really carrying the load for the advertisement that's occurring for everybody's benefit, including those people who rent vacation homes. This is really just an attempt to level the playing field, so my suggestion is that you keep it as close as possible to what the motel and hotel owners are subject to, and then fair, then you, it becomes a level playing field for everybody, and that's what the intent was. Everybody shares in the cost of promoting, and everybody benefits from that, and then, you know, have one group, the motel and hotel owners, feeling like they're the only ones carrying the load for the vacation rentals. I think it's important to point out that it's actually the consumer that's carrying the load here, that's who's paying the three percent, it's not the hotel, the, my, the concerns that I'm hearing, is it so much- My, the concerns that I'm hearing, is it so much on the 3% that they're gonna have to charge? It's, you know, John and Jane Doe that own a camp, and now they gotta do all this paperwork because they've been renting it out for the last 30 years to, to a family that will come once a week, and that's what's scaring them. It's not so much the 3%, it's all the paperwork and bureaucracy that's gonna be involved in meeting that requirement.
I'm not familiar with the paperwork. I'm sure Mike is. We wanna hear Mike's explanation as to what the paperwork is. You can listen to that. Somebody wanna move to, off the mic, the courtesy slide? Move it.
For a second.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, come on up.
Come on down.
Here for sitting on the end. Yes, the question is, Mike is.
I think what your question is, is the documentation, the paperwork. It's fairly simple, I'll be very honest with you. It's not a complicated formula. There's a one-time registration, you're gonna put on your name, your address, a contact you, an estimate, and it's only an estimate of how frequently you're gonna rent it. We don't hold you to it. You say you're gonna rent it for only two weeks a year, that's fine, if you rent it for 14 weeks a year, we're not gonna check up on it, but there is a place on there, and we may change that registration form. We've talked about changing the registration form to accommodate tours, or the rentals, but the actual, the actual documentation to submit the money is very simple. There's a calculation in there, he says, "How much did you get? What's the 3%? 3% times $1,000, you gotta give me $30, you send me a check for $30." It's very simple, it's not a complicated formula. I'll be more than happy to work with anybody that has a problem with it. It's the simplest form I've ever seen, and it was made simple to make it easy for people, so it's not a difficult thing, and as you said, it's the consumer that's paying for it. Keep in mind, this isn't the owner, it's not a burden on the owner that you're gonna have to pay more taxes every year, so. It's a very simple form, but we'll work with them.
They may have sent us all a copy of that form, Mike.
Absolutely, and we've talked about even revising that form, and I know I've missed a couple of committee meetings, but as we go through, I think you're gonna have another one, we're gonna talk about possibly revising that, make it even simpler than it is now, so we'll make it as simple as possible, it's very easy for them.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. For Mike, thanks. Mike, did you have something? Did you have a question?
No, I'm in favor of it.
Randy?
Well, I just wanted to point out, I guess what was just said, and I agreed with Dan, the committee discussed all these different options and went round and round, and that's where we ended up where we are. We're not looking to hurt the mom and pop, but this is a simple, a very simple procedure, and again, they're not paying it. And the other thing that I would point out, that I'm sure that everybody here reads the newspapers, is I really, that is tourism is the bread and butter for Essex County, and the way life is now, vacation rentals is what people are doing, and if it's not happening in your town, it's, it's gonna be coming. I mean, it's, it's gonna come, that's how people are, you know, are doing things, they're renting out houses and whatnot. And the other thing that I would caution is, we're at 3%. Now, we had discussions a couple of years ago, and it didn't look like, because of the economic climate, about increasing that, but if you look, everyone around us is way more than that. I was in Grove City, Ohio, two weeks ago, and not to begrudge them of anything, but there's really not a lot in Grove City, Ohio. The occupancy tax, the hotel I stayed in was 10%. Burlington is 9%, and we're at 3. So, I think if you look at the big picture for this, I understand the concerns, there's people with questions, and oh, it's the burden, it's really not that big of a deal, it really and truly isn't, and it is not coming out of their pocket. They are charging the person that is coming and renting the home, and I travel extensively, I've brought this up several times, no one ever asks when they rent a property, what is the occupancy tax? It just doesn't happen. So, thank you.
Any other questions before we set a public hearing date?
Bill? I would, one thing I would like to do is, is I would like to point out to my colleagues that we do have a letter this morning from a gentleman, one of my constituents, who's very knowledgeable of taxes and property issues, and I would like all of you to make note of that, and before we have our public hearing, I don't think anyone will know what's going on. I think John's big issue is that we do have a public hearing prior to adopting this, and that, that has been set by Mr. Manning.
That is, clear out the letter this morning, everyone else, Dan, Van, myself, so thank you. Jerry?
Just wanna remind everybody also, and I agree with what Randy said, the reason we instituted the bed tax years ago was to help offset the property tax, which is an unfair tax, far as I'm concerned. That's what everybody thinks. So, these property owners that are renting their cottages or homes out to help pay their property tax ought to be in favor of this, 'cause it's gonna help relieve the property taxes by getting this money in. And when I, just like Randy said, when I go somewheres, I don't ask what the bed tax is, I pay it. I don't even know what it is, but I still pay it, I'm glad to stay there. It's to help out.
$2,500 that Bruce has agreed to give back to the towns, is $2,500 if we don't have the budget to help promote our towns. So, it is a relief on our taxpayers as well, so.
Well, there's also, there's an agreement on additional monies.
Right, exactly.
To offset additional costs.
Fish hatchery.
Fish hatchery and so forth.
Exactly. See, thanks, Bill. June's getting a date, Dan just has a. I just wanna clarify, what we're doing right now is we're simply introducing this local law. It's the first step in the local law process, as most, as you all know. Then we'll have the public hearing. If, if the public hearing goes smoothly, then there'll be another resolution approving and accepting the local law, where, you know, so this simply gets it in the pipeline for discussion purposes. If the public hearing, it doesn't go the way you want, and there's amendments or something, then we would set another public hearing, and then ultimately, the last step, as I said, is approving a local law. So, this is just introducing it at this juncture. Gets it in the pipeline. One day.
Do you wanna do it before Ways and Means? On the 28th, September 28th, to Monday?
Okay, so then, 9:30.
We could do 9:30.
So, that's part of the resolution, that becomes part of the resolution, okay? So, we. Just a roll call vote. With that, the 28th, 9:30, that's fine with everyone? With that said, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 230, authorizing the county chairman to execute a state of New York master contract for grants with the New York State Department of State relative to contract C-1000522 for Champlain Valley waterfront improvements in an amount not to exceed $290,923 in execution of the memorandum of agreements with the towns of Crump Point, Scroon, Wilmington, Newcombe, Taconroga, and the Alseba River Association for consultant planning and design services, education and outreach, water quality monitoring, river restoration, and the purchase of supplies and materials incident to the various projects.
Move by Mr. Harrington, that's a second. Second by, to Marnell, Mr. Marnell. No, that's your question. If done, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 231, authorizing the conveyance of Hurricane Irene buyout properties acquired by the county of Essex pursuant to the federal hazard mitigation grant program administered by the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services to the various towns in Essex County where these properties are situated, ID'd with reservation of a conservation easement to the county.
Move by Mr. Gardner, second. Mr. Maryhill, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, Tom.
Dan Manney, the property, that 10-Tunnel Avenue, that property's located in the village of Port Henry, but that would go to the town, I believe. I brought that up before, I didn't know who.
Which one is it, Tom?
It's property number, 10-Tunnel Avenue, the Finacy property. It's the only one in the town of Mariah.
And now, what is the?
The property is located within the village of Port Henry.
Okay, and the town of Mariah wants it instead?
Well, we would take it. I know you can't do anything with it, but.
Okay, you got it.
I don't know, okay, I'm just saying, because it's within the village, does it, does it have to go to the village, is my question, I guess.
If they can go to anybody we want it to go to.
Well, then, sign it over to me personally.
Sure. And then we'll call, share, cutting, and. Okay. Thank you. So, you want it to go to the town of Mariah?
Yes.
As long as the town of, you know, it's, it's our property, we can convey it to the town of Mariah should we, if you wish, as long as the town of Port Henry doesn't want it. There's no legal.
Village of Port Henry.
Or village, I mean, yeah, exactly. Okay, we'll give that to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I don't know, Dan, if I, I, our bond note is due for this project on 9/25. We are short a total of $137,031.61. As you're probably aware, under these FEMA projects, contrary to what you would consider common sense, interest are not chargeable, so the county was subject to interest charges. Additionally, we had about $93,729.17, which was work that was performed by our highway department. So, there's really a couple of options that we can do to do the budget transfers in order to pay this bond. We can take $43,302.44 out of fund balance to pay off the VAN that's due on 9/25, or we can take the whole $137.31 and reimburse DPW. It really becomes an issue of whether we reimburse DPW for the work they did, or we do not. That's up to you as a board.
I guess my comment would be, or concern, I mean, we certainly gotta take it out of, when you say out of fund balance, Dan, this year's fund balance, I'm assuming.
There's only one fund balance, technically, but yes.
You can't go to the prior year.
No, there's no such thing as prior year.
So, $43,204?
$43,302.34 would be what we would need to cover without reimbursing DPW.
I don't understand why we would reimburse DPW.
Well, again, the money is a different fund, it is a highway fund, the money was spent out of there, the work was performed by them.
I understand, but it's, it's the county department.
Yep.
They did this Monday through Friday, they would've been here anyway. It's not like they added additional hours to go up there and do the work, correct?
That's why I'm, that's why I'm suggesting.
No, I would not support that, to go back to DPW, obviously, we do have to pay the 43, I mean, it's like taking it out of one pocket and putting it in the other.
Yeah. So. So, if that's the case, then we would need a resolution authorizing $43,302.44 to come out of fund balance to pay off the bond, the VAN that's due on 9/25.
We need to vote on 231 first, then we'll move to where we take the money out of. So, do we have a mover for 231?
We did, Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Maryhill and Mr. Moore.
So, we'll all vote on that.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And the.
We're gonna do this one at the end.
Yeah, we'll, 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 money transfer at the end. Yeah.
We're gonna come back to that one.
Yep.
Resolution 232, authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to Hawkins, Dalefield, and Woods for bond council services.
Move by Mr. Grinnell, second by Mr. Marnell. Comments, your question? That did what the bid?
Yes, it did.
How many people, how many bids?
I think there were five, was there not?
Yeah, there were five.
Comments, your question? Marnell.
Dan, last time the town could figure back on this contract, right?
Yes, yeah, you can figure back off of this contract, that's correct, Dan.
Yes, yes, it is. We have resolutions. Roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 233, authorizing payment of up to $15,000 to the New York State Association of Counties as host county for the 2015 Fall Conference, to be held in Lake Placid, New York, for such funds to be appropriated from the contingency account.
Move by Mr. Skozavala, second by Mr. Moore. Comments, your question? If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon's excuse, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two thirty-eight. Authorizing the replacement of furnace bridge over Black River Towne Westport project and further authorizes the purchasing agent to award bids to the Fort Miller Company Incorporated for the precast bridge for the furnace bridge project in a total amount of two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, one hundred, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and to award the bid to John W. Sheehan and Sons for the installation of a furnace bridge in a total amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute contracts in the above referenced furnace bridge project, which funds are to come from the bridge bond, providing all necessary permits and contracts are in place and approval by the county attorney.
Move by Mr. Connell, second. Mr. Moore. Comments or questions?
Again, this is, this project will be held up, I think, um, we're lacking an APA permit that probably will not get in before September thirtieth. Um, we've had discussions with the contractor, um, the understanding is that he's willing to hold his price until the spring season, um, so that, I guess Dan would need to be noted within the contract, I guess, um, if we're gonna sign it, but, um, that's why we're, um, recommending that he authorize now, because we are being given assurance by the contract that he'll hold his price.
Mr. Marnell?
I just, uh, was there other contracts? Contractors bidding on that, did we get other bids, as they own the bid?
Yeah, we did. I think we got, I, I don't have it in front of me, but, I can find it.
Mr. Harrington, do you have a question?
No.
That just seemed like a lot of money, Mr. Box Colder.
We can offer the courtesy to Chris if you wanna.
I'll offer the courtesy of the floor. Uh, twelve, allow them to call.
Yes, you do.
Um, there was three bids, I think, I think it was three bids in there, um, and that was low bid for that particular project, it's, I mean, if, if you think it's high, we can table it and we can rebid it next year, I mean, it's, it's, uh...
Right. You know, Box Colder, I mean, they're, they're just so big, and it seems like, it seems like that's, that's a pretty high price for, for them at Box Colder.
Yeah, we actually, we actually had four bids, they were six hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred, um, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine eighty-seven, and eight hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Mike, we have a bridge in Keene that just came in, we have the bridge from Towne J to install the bridge above it, six forty-seven, and we have the bridge, so please call it.
Well, I'm forgetting, I'm paying the big bid, and that's what it is, that's what it is.
Any further questions? Chris, anything, anything to Chris? Freedom. Any other questions on the resolution? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon's excuse, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two thirty-nine. Authorizing the project for the Bartlett Road Bridge Replacement Project in the Towne of Keene and further authorizes the purchasing agent to award a bid to Adrona Concrete to Perform Site and Substructure Work for the Bartlett Road Bridge Replacement Project at a cost of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, with funds to come from the twenty-fourteen Bridge Bond, providing all necessary permits and contracts are in place and approval by the county attorney.
I'd like to move that, Terry?
Okay.
Second. Mr. Scovella followed, Mr. Maryhill, comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon's excuse, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two forty, authorizing the bridge projects that had been approved and completed using funds from the two thousand nine and twenty-fourteen Bridge Bond monies.
Move by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Marnell, Mr. Scovella. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote. Aye.
Resolution two forty-one. Authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute a grant of easement with Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation over premises known as Thirteen Fish Hatchery Road in the Towne of Crown Point for the purposes of providing a pole line and high and low voltage electric current to the property owned by the Towne of Crown Point.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second. Mr. Moore? Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two forty-two. Authorizing the purchasing agent to grant a bid and award for engineering services for Rome Dam Project.
Move by Mr. Depot, second by Mr. Scovella, and Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two forty-three. Authorizing the purchasing agent to bid and award for the purchase and installation of an externally located walk-in cooler and walk-in freezer for the nutritious, nutrition building as per AES project drawing number forty-three ninety-six.
Move by Mr. Blades, second. Mr. Moore. Comments or questions, Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, uh, we spoke about it last week, but this could be temporary, if we build a little building. These, if we checked into rentals, they do have rentals?
Yeah, we had checked into rentals, it's like two thousand, two to three thousand a month, depending on the distance they have to have them brought in from, um, by the time we were done, we, we felt like we would be at, you know, if it took a year, a year and a half, we're almost past the cost of, um, putting permanent ones in. At this point, it really appears that, based upon the grant we submitted, um, that we'll probably rebuild at that site regardless, um, and so I think by spending the money now on a permanent solution, I think we'll be further ahead in the long run.
Uh, I also reached out to, uh, some of the municipal office and to the governor's office, trying to find possibly something that National Guard or Army Reserves or someone would have one that we could use, but they said there's none available.
What about the school?
We did reach out to them, tried to find another one. Was that Tom?
I was wondering about the school, was it a town, Lewis School, if they had any additional space they could use?
I did not check with the schools, Tom, I, I know that, um, when, um, MayCap was looking for space, I, I think they may have checked it out, I'm assuming.
Any other questions? Not roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon's excuse, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two forty-four. Accept, accepting the grant in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars for project number forty-eight-five dash zero zero five-two from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the William Petro Dam Mitigation HMGP Project and further authorizing a budget amendment in the Community Resources Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars for the same.
Move by Mr. Scovella, second.
Dan, can we amend this to include bid and award?
Sure.
I think you need to do an amendment to authorize us to draw up a bid and award.
And you moved to authorize to bid and award. Scott Baba, Mr. Grinnell, Mr. Depot, all favor? Aye. Roll call vote. Now, the resolution has amended. Roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries, as amended. Resolution two forty-five. Seeking state assistance with the New York tax cap.
Move by Mr. Grinnell, second. Second.
Resolution two forty-six. Of condolence to the family of Daniel Owen Riggins.
Move by Mr. Marnell, second.
Resolution two forty-seven. Urging New York State Department of Conservation to keep all New York State campsites open until Columbus Day.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second.
Resolution two forty-eight. Authorizing the execution by the county chairman or county manager of the First Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Subrecipient Agreement, bearing agreement number CDBG-dR, and accepting grant funds in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars relative to the Al Saba Forks Water Building Relocation and Rolling Mill Road Project, Protection Project, and the Asteration and Flood Mitigation Project at Gulf Brook, Towne of Keene.
Move by Mr. Depot, second, that way. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon's excuse, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two forty-nine. Of support of the Adrona Deck Canoe Classic, the Ninety Miller, on September eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty fifteen, and in support of the permit application to the New York State Department of Transportation with respect to the same for the use and or closure of public highways during the event.
Move by Mr. Woodson, second. Second, uh, Mr. Grinnell. Comments or questions? Roll call vote. All favor, aye? Aye. Carry. On the floor?
I have the one for...
I mean, I have one, but I... Do you want me to read what I have? Or are they gonna move?
Let's do this morning transcript.
Oh, okay.
This is, uh, would be a resolution authorizing, um, forty-three thousand, three hundred and two dollars and forty-four cents from fund balance to pay the FEMA buyout properties, um, BANs that are due on September twenty-fifth.
Move by Mr. Scovella, second.
Renewed twelve, right?
Excuse me, that twelve, lot on the floor.
Yes, you do.
Move by Mr. Scovella, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions?
I just have a question, Dan, are, is that bond gonna be renewed, or are we...
No, that's paying that bond out.
Paying it out, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Other questions?
When were we gonna speak about reimbursing DPW? This one or another one? Well, I, I guess, um, we, the way it got moved was without reimbursing DPW. No, the way it was moved was we were gonna discuss that later.
That's, uh, up to you guys, okay. Yep, I'm, I'm subject here.
Because if not, then we'll vote on this one, but then I'm gonna bring it up right now.
Okay.
Reimbursing DPW.
We'll hold on this one as it is.
One more second.
And I need a roll call vote on that, please.
This is on the, um, to pay off the bond?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovella?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Now, I'd like to move a resolution to reimburse DPW for their work, to, so we can discuss it, so I can ask some questions.
Move by Mr. Moore, twelve, lot on the floor.
Yes, you do.
Two. Mr. Marnell, second.
And that's the amount of ninety-three thousand, seven twenty-nine seventeen.
Okay, you got it coming.
Well, you would need to take it from general fund balance and transfer it to highway. And let me just, just so you understand, um, there are times when, uh, we get down to the end of the budget year and, for whatever reason, the highway fund may have fund balance in it, and we, uh, when that occurs, we do at, on occasion, take money from fund balance to lower the levy. I don't know if that'll occur this year, 'cause I don't, Linda's not here, and we don't have the final, um, calculations done for highway fund balance, um, so potentially, um, you could be doing a little bit of a circle here, you could, you could be reimbursing highway ninety-three thousand dollars, um, right now, out of general fund, fund balance, and at the end of the year, Linda and I may suggest to you that you take ninety-three thousand out of highway fund balance to reduce levy. So, that's the, you know, that's the dynamic that needs to play out within the budget process to determine whether or not, number one, we've got enough, uh, money budgeted within highway for the projects that we need to accomplish, and once that's done, whether we have any money left over that we can use to lower the levy, or however that plays out. So, in that sense, I, you know, it may be worth waiting, but it's really up to this board.
Mr. Moore?
Well, that was one of the things I wanted to know. What DPW did was work that was because of a grant we're receiving, am I correct? It was, it was FEMA-related work. Right. Um, the problem is that, there are two things that really occurred under that FEMA project was the interest that we had to pay on the, on the money we borrowed, and the school taxes became due on those properties, um, because, um, you know, they simply hadn't been transferred over, so that's what really amounted to the difference in the cost. If you did not have those costs, I think that the overall difference in the project would have only been about seven thousand dollars, but once you added in those additional costs, is where we came up to the higher amount. Well, this is why I was wondering, Dan, can that ninety-three thousand dollars be reimbursed from FEMA as part of the project? No, they've already done their reimbursements as much as they will allow. Okay, and, and, 'cause I had a lot of questions, and the other question is, you think you answered it, this did not take away from any of the work that the DPW had to do, and if there is work, then there'll be money there for that work to finish the year? We didn't spend their money, I mean, so to speak, I mean, they, they're, did it put them behind schedule, probably, um, but, you know, it was because it was work that they did during the course of a normal work week, it's like Tommy said, they would've spent the money somehow on labor anyways, um, but... Right, but it could've been labor doing other work? Absolutely, yeah. You know, some of the work that they need to do. Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah. Okay, I have my questions answered.
Thanks, Mr. Moore. Mr. Scovella?
Back when we agreed to do this with county forces, there was a lot of discussion here. And I think it was at least my understanding, and probably everyone else that was on the board at that time, that this was all gonna be reimbursed through FEMA. But now we're finding that, obviously, the amount, is that ninety-three thousand, seven twenty, is that the total amount of work that they did up there? I mean, is this for, like...
No, that's, um...
Getting rid of the debris, is it, I, I guess I'm...
And that's the amount remaining to be transferred to DPW. I, I don't know, they, they did a lot of work, I mean, it was well beyond ninety-three thousand.
That's what I'm saying, so did we, so we must've submitted claims for this amount to FEMA.
Sure, yeah.
And we were reimbursed, I'm sure.
The amounts that we could be, but again, we're at the shortfall of errors.
The shortfall is because of the school tax.
It's because of the school tax and interest on bonds. You combine those two together, and that's where you get to hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
So, I'm trying to think of the year of Irene and Lee.
This is, this is why, this is why towns want counties to handle all these kinds of projects.
Yeah, absolutely, that's what, that's what I, and, and that was some of the discussion that we had at the time, um, and, uh, I'm trying to understand why the county got hooked for the school tax when those properties...
Properties had just had not been transferred over, they were still...
Right, my point exactly, the properties had not been transferred over, so those properties were still in those private individuals' names, so they chose not to pay the school tax, and then we turn around and pay it with interest and penalties? I'm not sure, how kosher is that? I mean, I don't, I don't know how much the school tax was, I tried my best to recoup all taxes, escrow monies, I went through a whole bunch of hoops to escrow monies from the proceeds that people were to get, as an example, someone was to get a hundred thousand dollars on the buyout, uh, I escrowed for the land and school taxes and any other taxes for that year and for the subsequent year, with an agreement with them that if there was, uh, an old rich, if I escrowed a certain amount of money and needed more, they paid it, or if I escrowed too much, too much money, I'd reimburse them. Some of them went on for a couple more years because of problems with title, a lot of these things were a mess, and, uh, most of the people, all of the people who owned these properties weren't wealthy, and they didn't wanna hire a lawyer to figure out the title problems, so, so I had to.
I, I understand that.
So, for a couple, I don't know exactly what the figures were for the school taxes on some of these, they weren't...
All right, my question is, could, were we, was that a legitimate expense, where we did not own the properties, go in there and pay those school taxes for those properties when they had not yet been transferred to the county?
It is now, yeah, I mean, we had closed, and all, all agreements between parties were done as of closing, so on these few properties where we had to pay the taxes, it is our expense. Or we simply don't pay it, and then we're still...
I understand how that would be our...
You can ask Mike, uh, if you want a clarification.
Mike's been already had to, Kirk, so...
I mean, look. Mike this, no. I think Mike Mascherini's nice, somebody offer courtesy of sorts for Mike Mascherini's. I'm not gonna listen. My question is very simple, was it appropriate for the County of Essex to pay those taxes on properties that we didn't own?
We owned them.
We owned them. Okay, well, that's, thank you, then you answered the question, 'cause you had said previously, a few minutes ago, before we took title.